All right, I'd like to call the meeting to a quarter and we'll stop with a question from the leader. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. And you've noticed we have two new members. We have Jim Pink and she is representing for a two-year term. And then we have Mrs. Jordan, who is a three-year term. Gordon.
Jordan.
Jordan. So what I'd like you to do is go around the room and say your name and what town you're from. I mean, I guess they can see your name tag, but anyway. So I'll start it off on Judy Ingram from Parsonsfield.
Betty Lawrence from Baldwin.
Brad Perkins from Cornish. You were strategically placed here so that I could indoctrinate you and have this in place.
I'm Cindy from Hiram.
I'm Haley Capata. I'm one of the student reps on the board, but I live in Cornish.
I am also a student rep on Miss Landry and Becky Connors from Parsonsfield.
Sutain Krikin-Kordinatum from Cornish.
Danielle Parker from Hiram.
I'm Amy Lucia. I'm from Parsonsfield.
Allison LaGuillier of Hiram.
Jolene Perkins, Parsonsfield.
Owen Thomas Baldwin.
Wes Sutherland, Baldwin.
Carl Henry, Hiram.
Hiram won. Johnny.
Johnny. Johnny Varsante Quarter.
I think it's Johnny. So we do not have a hearing of delegation, so let's go right on. We have a call. Consideration to approve the minutes for the March 2nd, March 8th, and March 16th, 2022 Board of Directors' Meeting. All those in favor? You probably have to abstain right there. Yeah. Got it.
You both abstained?
Yeah. Number three, consideration to approve the proposed agenda for the April 6th, 2022 Board of Directors' Meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? The agenda is approved. Business and Finance Report, Finance Committee.
So I'll report on behalf of the Finance Committee. We met this morning. Same report we've been having for some months now. State subsidies have been received and reported. All five town revenues have been received. Operating revenues continue to exceed expenses and our expenses are in line with the budget. Food service expenses, as you can see in the sheet in front of you, our revenues are starting to gain ground. So it's normal practice at this point in the year that we're playing catch-up. I anticipate we will throughout the year. And adult ed revenues exceed expenses. We are in very good shape financially.
Any questions? You ready to answer some of these questions?
We had a meeting this morning for review of some construction projects that are upcoming. The repair of the high school track and an update provided about the outdoor bathrooms. We also discussed the potential timeline for upcoming SRO projects. And we would like to discuss the Horizons building use.
So I'll jump in on that, so Judy certainly can. Some rec council representatives were wondering if and when they could use the Horizons building again with some of the COVID restrictions being lifted and some people being welcome to campus over some history. I think rec has used that building historically for their meetings. They've done some summer camps and programming in the Horizons building, so they were wondering about the use. At this point, we are using that Horizons building as a classroom setting. There are some iPads to work in there. I think the feeling of, and please, Construction, jump in. I think the feeling of Construction this morning was perhaps at the end of the year, we put some things off to the side, clean it out, and rec can use it for their summer programming and meetings through the summer. But as long as we're using it as a classroom during the school year with some of that type of equipment through the school year, we'd like to use it as a school district. That was Construction, please jump in if I didn't get that right. So I think we'd like the board's feeling, I guess, on what to let the rec folks know about use, but I think the Construction's recommendation is rec can use it through the summer after our school year is over and not during the school year.
Any concerns, questions?
We have an exclusion test who working out through their due, how often during the week, and how many go to attend. They don't have a clue despite giving them an open check.
Well, they're doing summer school, summer camp.
Summer camp.
Summer camp.
Camp.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is a regular attendance. I wasn't aware of that.
There were other groups meeting there also, like the Peakers or Scotts maybe or something. Are they aware of this?
No, so we're having this conversation tonight and I or Judy will report back to let those folks know what our decision is.
Did you say the Peakers? Yes. Any other questions, Connor?
Probably a vote to allow rec to use the Horizons building through the summer months.
I would like to someone to make that motion.
Make that a motion.
Thank you, Owen. Second.
Jenny?
Jenny.
What would that be, middle June to third week last?
I would say school ends June 15th, so maybe a couple of days to clean it out this day, so the following Monday through when we start getting ready, maybe the Monday before. That's about right.
Okay.
West, yes.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor. Please raise your hand.
Thank you, all.
Record Room Report, Student Report.
Good evening. Unified basketball has come to an end and participants have been sad to see it go. On a super positive note to conclude the season, on March 24th, there was a staff versus unified game and the staff came up short and they lost, but it was an extremely uplifting event for the community that many students and staff attended. So in case you missed it, it's on Soccer TV. And Student Council's March Madness calendar was successful in lifting people's spirits and sharing hot pride throughout the month of March. Participation levels were high, especially for Bring Anything But a Backpack Day. We're happy to report that the musical went very well. And now for our upcoming events. NHS is currently sponsoring a raffle to support Long Pond in order to help create a safe swimming environment for this beautiful aspect of our community. By purchasing a raffle ticket, take one of these fish, you may have a chance to win one of three different baskets. Go on this paper that Judy handed us. Basket A contains Soccer B apparel and Basket B and C contain an assortment of goods like a Bloomer's gift certificate, a decorative wine glass hanger, a Long Pond Association short sleeve sir, and much more. Tickets are in the shape of a paper fish and they can be purchased by reaching out to any NHS member or Ms. Logan. One ticket costs $2 or you can purchase three tickets for $5. Purchases can be made until April 12th. And Ms. Logan was happy to report that we have currently sold $137 worth of tickets and more coming in. Spring baseball, softball, and track are well underway and going very well. Baseball will have a couple of scrimmages starting next week, but both teams will have their first official home openers on Monday, April 18th. Both teams will play double headers against Mountview at 1:00 and 2:30. Track will be having their first meet at York High School on Friday, April 29th.
Following that, the sophomore class will be hosting an art, craft, and student film fair at the Austin Valley Fairgrounds on Saturday, March 20th, March, May 7th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Many groups from the school will be there and some of the examples are civil rights and Student Council, and the band may even play at some point throughout the day. The senior class is also very fortunate to be able to class trip to New York City from May 15th to 17th, so I'm personally very excited about that. The JROTC cadets have the opportunity to attend the annual spring military cadet ball this Saturday, April 9th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. Cadets will travel to Rochester American Legion and New Hampshire. Dover and Mass B six Navy JROTC will also be attending. This event is an excellent opportunity to interact with people from other schools. The JROTC cadets will also be participating in the clothing bar on May 4th. The play will take place from May 27th until May 29th and times are to be determined. Girls and Boys State members from the junior class were selected. For boys and for girls were picked to represent SOCP. This year, the recipients of this honor are Ronan Anderson, Thomas Bruley, Jonah Nertil, Owen Trombley, Haley Butterworth, our own Brooke Landry, Abby Sanborn, and Charlie Valandcourt. This is also the first year that Girls and Boys Day will be combined to form Dierdow State. Hopefully, you'll be able to attend and participate in some of these events.
Any questions from the student reps? Yes, Danny.
What is NHS?
National Honor Society.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was blanking on that.
Yes, Brad.
The Mountview games are going to be here on the 18th. Who's, I saw the softball's way and baseball's here.
They're both here.
They're both here?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful, thank you.
This one's important. What were the best non-backpacks?
You have to explain how. Go ahead.
We had some bring a kayak.
That's a good.
That was definitely the best one, but there was like wheelchairs and baby carriages, but by far, I brought like a cooler, but the kayak was definitely the best one. It was so funny.
So in case, some people weren't at the last board meeting, the whole point was you can't bring a backpack to school, so you have to bring something with your stuff in it.
Right, right. Yeah, you couldn't bring a backpack. So people definitely got creative.
And I just wanted to jump in for a minute, thank Haley and Mr. Burnett and Senior Class Advisors and Sudei. The New York trip that we've seen in front of you is replacing the Quebec trip, so there were some challenges getting across the border with COVID and things like that. That was a pretty great brainstorm. People have really pitched in. You can see Haley's really excited. So the board has historically voted about going to Quebec. I don't know if you feel like you need to vote to allow the kids to go to New York, but this isn't an in-place trip of Quebec that they've missed out on now for a couple of goes, which we've approved historically year over year. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for the kids, just like that they get the chance to go there. If the board feels like they need to vote, fine, but I don't think, I think it's we've approved this year over year.
Brad?
I'm in favor of it. I think we should vote because, you know, if we don't do this and approve it and keep on track every year, they can be Penix Arizona next year.
Great.
Whatever.
Hey, I'd be on board with you.
We need to vote.
As part of this deal, we go on trips too?
Okay, so.
Motion second to approve the senior class trip to New York. Motion was Bethany or, sorry.
Brad.
Brad?
Second.
Jolene, approve senior class trip to New York.
Any other questions about that trip? That will be a wonderful opportunity. All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Thank you. And Senior Class Advisors, John Short sleeves and Christine Kim. So just a shout out to all of them. I think it's been some super cool meetings playing that out.
Lots of meetings.
Thank you, board. I think it's going to be a great experience for our kids.
So when you guys were mentioning about the basketball game, the students won, I saw someone behind you kind of going, yeah. I'm assuming you played or you filmed?
I filmed, yeah.
I was trying to cheerlead, but the staff just didn't, you know, didn't feel my enthusiasm. Well, we had some good commentators that game too.
Activities that you just reported on are really what you remember about high school and wonderful activities and different things, so thank you. Of course. Record Committee, Jolene.
The March 9th meeting was our Substance Abuse Prevention Committee meeting. We began by sharing information and what we had learned. The committee reviewed its action plan through the primary, secondary, and tertiary lenses of substance abuse prevention. At the primary level, that is everyone, the school has increased seminary opportunities, increased the length of health class from 10 weeks to one year, and provided additional professional development around substance abuse prevention. Regarding those in the secondary category, that is at-risk students, Mr. Wolf reported that there is an increase in the use of dab pens as well as THC edibles and candies at high school, both of which are difficult to detect. The middle and high schools are using the safety first program. Carol Murphy authored the Health Center's Health and Behavioral Health issues and its collaboration with schools on providing information to parents. For the tertiary category, that is students struggling with substance abuse, the lack of treatment for use is a problem. Sweetser is providing one onsite social worker and SAD 55 has added a substance abuse counselor in the last few years. Only the SRO is presently carrying Narcan. Current policies and supports for students struggling with illegal substances will be reviewed. Then we had a brief update on the MIGAS survey. Survey results will not be available from state until October. They will be on the agenda for the committees next meeting on November 1st.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Jolene? Okay. So Allison and I have a tag team on the Wellness Committee report. It's two pages, so I will be the first page. We have two student reps on this committee too. So the first one is Sophie Short sleeves reported that the source of strength mental health peer supporter training for students will take place on Monday, May 2nd, from 11:30 to 2:30. The staff advisor training will be at the same time on Wednesday, April 27th. Teachers who have signed up to participate in this are Mrs. Short sleeves, Mr. Dembowski.
Dembowski.
Thank you. Mr. Kearney, Mr. Goodfield, and Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf reported that the high school administration has recently become aware of commercially-produced THC-infused K-cup coffee pods that are made to fit current coffee makers. We were made aware of this because one student posted on Snapchat after starting their day with a brew buzz. However, we confiscated and tested the student's coffee and it tested negative for THC. The THC content is lower than other edible products. We have it counted at 100 milligrams per serving as opposed to 15 grams in edible gummy worms that we confiscated a few weeks ago. These are being sold in marijuana dispensaries. Both products contain delta H THC. Mrs. Wedgwood reported that she has not yet had a chance to speak with the fine arts leaders. Miriam England and Pre-K to 8 and Sharon Shees not chills, 9 to 12, but will set up a meeting to discuss the Healthy Foods Still Life Project in the next couple of weeks. Vaping prevention, same thing. Mrs. Davidson reported that she feels the health curriculum is in good shape in terms of educating students about the risk of vaping. They start with fourth graders but get into a lot of more detail with seventh and eighth graders. She gets into not only nicotine but other chemicals which are in the jewels and other vape products since as a something, I can't pronounce that, a fluorid-like to cancer. It's part of it. Heavy metals such as nickel and lead and volatile organic compounds, they're called VOCs. The students also learn about brain development and risk-taking so that students are aware of the delusion of immortality that is natural in youth. Mrs. Dennison also reported that she is a regular, in regular communication with Mr. Klatt at the high school, so their instruction is well coordinated. Mr. Wolf reported that he read about an anti-vaping peer leadership program through the Healthy May Partnership website called Sidekicks. He will communicate with the Courtney LaBagna at Healthy Oxford Hills for more information. And why don't you take the next, because it goes to the next page.
Mr. Wolf reviewed the current consequence structure for students caught vaping at the high school, which is first offense, one day within school suspension, including referral and meeting with substance abuse counselor. Second offense, two days out of school suspension, continued meetings with substance abuse counselor. Third and subsequent offenses, five days out of school suspension, special action plan coordinated with parent and health professionals geared to cessation and addiction issues. Mr. Wolf distinguished between vaping, nicotine delivery, and dabbing, THC delivery through cannabinoid and a butane suspension. The consequence structure for dabbing is the same as for marijuana, alcohol, and other prohibited intoxicants. First offense, 10-day out-of-school suspension reduced to five out-of-school suspension with agreement to participate in substance abuse counseling, which we provide. Second offense, 10-day out-of-school suspension with re-entry, meeting with parent, administrator, student, and superintendent. Third offense, 10-day out-of-school suspension with possible referral to the school board with a recommendation of expulsion. Mr. Wolf shared that we have a small number of students, fewer than three, who have three or more vaping-related offenses. Feedback from the team was that this is an appropriate balance of treatment and consequence and would not recommend increasing the penalty. The Virgin Pulse Staff Wellness Program participation discussion went as follows. Ms. Connors reported that we have approximately 30% of eligible staff signed up for Virgin Pulse, a lot less than that use it regularly. The group discussion discussed possible incentives and motivators, including walking, running, hiking, and weight training. This year's National Bike to Work Day is Friday, May 20th. Ms. Connors will come to the next high school faculty meeting on Monday, April 11th to guide people through downloading and navigating the Virgin Calls app on their phones. The next meeting in adjournment, the team indicated that we would continue with three meetings per year on Friday, early release days. Mr. Wolf will email members of the team after the 22, 23 school calendars approved later this spring and proposed meeting times.
Any questions? Becky, do you want to? Go ahead.
Who is the substance abuse counselor?
Ms. Rhea.
That's what I thought. I personally know that it's a huge issue in the school, especially in high school. Is there, because Ms. Rhea is not always available to be like in school. Do we have like a plan if she's like not there and I see someone doing it, do I just go to another?
Administration.
Administration.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome, of course. Do you have questions?
Why is the substance abuse counselor not always available?
As you, we've been, light a social worker and she's had to cover some duties at the elementary school.
Good question, Harry. Becky, do you want to just explain a little bit about what Virgin Puls is?
Yeah, sure. So it's through our insurance company, Anthem, our health insurance, so it's for people that are members of Anthem. It's a wellness program, so employees or people that are covered by insurance that are, you know, so like if your significant other was on the insurance plan, they could join too. They earn points for doing certain things and then they translate those points into gift cards. So it's an easy way to pick up a few free gift cards just for doing some healthy habits.
And the more people that do not get sick and use Anthem insurance helps our insurance, right?
Yes.
Go ahead. Not insurance, so I want to make sure we're done it within the, before I go, but it's going back to what we were talking about. So the social worker's not available because she's covering the elementary school and we're about to lose another social worker, so when are we getting?
That was the one that made us a full freight of social workers and that individual has resigned, yes, so we're back to not having a full load of social workers. Yes, that's true.
Do any on the horizon before the end of the school year or is this?
We advertised the job. We had, just to not have this board understanding delusions, we had the other job advertised all year too and it took until January, February to fill it. So most school districts are struggling with the same thing. I'm not going to lie to this board, I'm not super hopeful that we fill this job before the year, so we'll try, we post it, we ask around, but it's a challenge.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay. Lake Region?
Brit sent out an email that I'm sure everyone got.
Went out on the board agenda, yes, Brad.
Oh, you did.
Yes.
I would like to add something to this, though. I was there. Heard some things that I'd already knew about previously and it just brought up my commitment and I already had a meeting with Dr. Landry last week discussing this. If you, if you looked at what Brit had written in here about Mr. Rithlin had scheduled a field trip, 18 kids had signed up, eight got on the bus, and another one, eight, I think it was eight signed up and four got on the bus, which shows in my mind a level of commitment or a level, you know, of serious loss of commitment in any way. I've also had a quick discussion, several quick discussions with this, about this with Owen, and he graciously gave me a tour of Wilmington, London, which was great and, you know, trying to figure out something to do to get these kids to do something. I, I'm here because I think that we can do better for the kids in this district and I don't think we're even coming close to doing our job, not even coming close. Whether it's what we expect, what we expect of teachers, administrators, kids, some of you that are new on the board probably don't know that a kid gets a 55 average whether they come to school or not. They don't, they don't even have to attempt, they get a 55. There are things that just go on and on and I won't take up a lot of your life tonight, but I sent us a picture to Suzanne Dag of, you know, the JROTC makes a big production of honoring our soldiers and so forth, like before the holidays. I sent her a picture, it's on my phone, of the dead wreaths and so forth sitting in the cemetery in Cornish. You want to go on? I think we're failing so badly and sorry I've gotten with you, this was your first meeting, but another, another example of it, you know, the big deal for the selling Christmas trees was the senior class trip. I stopped and visited with two parents selling Christmas trees there one day and they said they couldn't get any kids to sell them and they had kids that would come themselves. And by the way, if you go down to the Cornish Fairgrounds, the racks are still there from where they were selling the Christmas trees. I haven't been taken care of yet. It's April. You know, I'm looking around and seeing some looks on some faces that I suspect is a bit of embarrassment and should be, and should be for myself as well. But we got to get on this, we've got to talk about many different things, including, this is, at this meeting, I brought this up, I said, this is not a Lake Region problem, it's not a SOCP problem, this is a problem with society. And us sitting here shaking our heads and just, you know, waiting for the next meeting, not doing anything about it, we have got to address it. You know, this business of kids failing in class and come back for three weeks in the summertime and do credit recovery and get credit for taking a class, I'm against that as well. I paid for you to go to school once. I'm not, I don't want to pay for you. Do you want to come to school in summertime for credit recovery? Pay a hundred bucks. Let's, let's see if you're really interested in learning something. This, I'm, I'm going to come back, I will have a prepared speech the next time and it, you know, people, and I know there's going to be a lot of parent kickback that do not want to be responsible for what they get. I realize that our teachers and administrators have them seven hours a day. They, they are at home under home responsibility to the other 17 hours, but we still, I don't feel, are doing our job or coming close to it. Thank you for listening to me.
So what else happened at Lake Region, Regent?
So what happened at Lake Region?
When, when our meeting?
Oh, several people, the kinds of counselors said, I agree with what Brad has to say, you know, we're not, this is a society problem and we are not addressing it. They didn't offer any answers and solutions and I think they were right in doing that and I don't want either, but it's something that we need to work on. You know, it's discouraging to me to see what's going on. I told Dr. Landry, I said, I saw an ad in the shopping guide last fall that they were doing a bottle drive to raise money for uniforms for, I believe it was a middle school soccer program. You can drop your bottles off at this place, this place, and this place and we'll get credit for them. Now, when I was a little bit younger, bottle drives, paper drives and so forth, you went nothing on. knocking on doors, you didn't have them drop the bottles off and tell who you wanted to donate it from. We are failing.
Haley.
I know finally we're kind of coming off that curve of COVID and so I think that's, people are trying to find their normal and now that we've kind of found it, I think from here on out is how we can be better. But for a couple of years, it was really hard for anyone to feel normal. And I know from a student aspect, trying to learn online and not having like social aspects, like we couldn't do, the summer of 2020, normally we do a huge bottle drive over Labor Day weekend for field hockey, we go around all the towns. Because of COVID, everyone was locked up in their houses and we were able to do that. So I think now that we're kind of streaming out of COVID, people can stop using the excuse of COVID taking things away, you know what I mean? And thankful to this board that removed the mask mandate so we can really. But I think, I think it starts, I think it starts here and once we get things rolling, I think people will be really receptive to it, but they need to know that COVID is not an excuse anymore unless you catch it. So thank you guys.
I was going to save this till after the meeting to talk to you personally, but I'm going to do it right now. I want to thank you for speaking up about the question about the substance abuse counselor and so forth. Since we've had students come on this board, you're the first one that I could ask a question like that or something about going on in school and how it works. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Happy to meet you.
Okay, so the policy committee met on March 9th. We did a second review of JK, JKE with some minor changes that were suggested by Nancy Perkins of the previous board meeting. And these two plus JKE R2 are now ready for a second review.
Hang on one second, Missing. Nancy called about JK, so I just want to read the following and see what the board thinks. So under principles to guide, development, implementation, it originally said the board expects the following principles to guide. Nancy suggested instead of aligning on the board, the following principles shall guide, just limiting the board from the principles. That is one suggestion, they're minor, but just what you're approving. The second was regarding restraint and seclusion. Any restraint and seclusion of students shall comply with, we had applicable regulations and board policy. Nancy suggests all main laws related to student discipline. So I think minor edits, so I think if we're approving it, A, would you like to approve this one or the original one, but if people, just a thumbs up on those edits and then we could approve this edited one.
So we'll approve that.
The J, and I have the notes, some J, I think you can approve it because now the board said that's the fine deal, so I think it's fine to second read that.
Okay.
Thanks Judy. You had it all right, I didn't mean to interrupt, that's the new JK.
And then the second one, which was Title I, the parent involvement for Also at the elementary school and the middle school, that was also discussed with some minor tweaks. Did you have anything to say on that?
That was first read.
That's, I know.
Okay, yes, no, no, I have, that's all I have in this room.
Okay, so those are the two, the policies that were reviewed. Now, action items, consideration to approve the following policies as a first read, KBFD2, and both of them are Title I, one for parent involvement in the elementary school, the other one for parent involvement in the middle school. Thank you. Second?
Second. You got it?
Any questions on that? All those in favor? Thank you. Consideration to approve the following policies as a second read, adoption, JK student discipline, JKE expulsion of students, JKE-R2, readmittance hearing procedures. Thank you.
Second.
You mean Brad?
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so I'm just going to read some names for the folks maybe watching on TV and I have one update already. So superintendent appointed Leah Ridley as middle school track coach. Leah informed Sonny Logan and myself she will not be able to do it this season, so you'll see next month. I guess it's a resignation, it hasn't really started, but, so we are looking for an assistant middle school track coach. The rest are all as read or as written. Dennis Blaisdell, middle school baseball, Chris Sanborn, varsity softball, Cameron Blood, varsity girls track, Dom Locke, varsity boys track, Sue Drowns, middle school softball. We thank all of those folks for allowing our spring sports to operate, you know, we know it's important to our students. Resignations from the following, Shani Cacciolini, ed tech at the middle school, Alicia Buzzell, library ed tech at the middle school, Holly Moran, social worker, Laura Hermans, educational technician at our high school, and Mackenzie Suprenard, grade six teacher. So I know you can all read the agenda in front of you, but anybody watching on TV, those are our appointments and resignations. And I think at this point, oh, I was going to do the budget presentation for folks watching, I know you've already seen it, almost all of you, maybe a couple haven't seen the whole thing, so it'd be an exciting fifteen minutes at Ross, but I think maybe Jolie has a question to go with this.
So the resignations, with the exception of Mackenzie Suprenard, we assume that all the rest are effective immediately?
All the rest are effective by April vacation. Yes, so fairly immediately, yes, not end of year, that's correct. Great question.
Brad?
Who's this?
Jolie, you have it.
Okay, Brad, go ahead.
Who's Chris Sanborn?
Chris Sanborn is our varsity softball coach.
Is he a lawyer?
Yes.
Yes.
He's a lawyer, but he's also the face keeper of law.
That's what I was wondering, I always describe as that teacher.
Yes.
I was wondering if that's what it was.
Owen's like the mayor around here, so there you go.
Haley.
He is doing a wonderful job so far. It was a hard adjustment moving from coach, almost an entire new coaching staff except for the JV coach. So it was a hard adjustment, but they're all doing great. I miss Brian dearly though, but anyhow, just want to let you know he's doing awesome.
Inside scoop, all right. All right, Miss Day, you psyched? All right, so I know the board has seen this, so I'll try and go through fairly quickly and I know, so actually, for the people watching, not only has the board seen this, the select folks have seen this, I want to thank our school board for all of their support, I'll stand up while I do this, thank the board for all their support, thank the select people for their support, our staff, I think we're putting on a pretty strong budget this year, I'm very proud of the work our administrative team put in, our office staff here, Sue and Peggy and Becky put quite a bit of work into what you see, the PowerPoint slides, Sue does a wonderful job, basically just get the role of talking through it. So hang with me one more time, board, and actually, one more time on May 2nd, we'll do this in the cafeteria for our public and they'll put their hands up, I hope, at the public budget hearing and we vote on May 17th. So here's our proposed budget. So great idea, Sue Day, we'll get right to the end at the beginning of this, our local contribution for 21, 22, and 22, 23 is the same, so that means no tax increase. That's not really true. I look like a liar at the end because based on valuation, some towns are paying more and some are paying less, but if we were all one town, we're not asking for any more money from the local taxpayer this year. Regular instruction, Article One, so there are eleven articles altogether. Article One, and you'll see this on every slide, salary and benefit increases, I think our board believes this, I think our select people believe this, I know our staff believes this, we have got to continue to pay more money to be competitive and keep people around here, the people that do a great job around here. We have to work to increase salaries, we look around and it wasn't a ha-ha funny, but I think they plow people involved, and as mentioned, it's twenty-eight bucks an hour to plow roads, I think they're going right back if you ask kids what they make, kids are making fifteen, twenty bucks an hour, I mean, it just is what it is. So there you go, Capone's doing even better, so great. But I think, that's the reality, we just have to pay more money if we want quality people. So there's no secret, trying to tell everybody that, thanks to the board for supporting that. Some other reasons for the increase, you'll see that in every line, that's why I mentioned that. Our Anthem insurance has been pretty steady, we did receive an increase this year. Tuition and professional development, that's great, more staff taking courses and we're transitioning VHS to early college. I think both of those young ladies take early college courses, the benefit of early college, advanced courses in many different areas. We have a kid who's a freshman in college right now, who had a whole semester paid for by taking early college classes. I think it's a great thing that we offer our kids. We'll transition some of that money to jobs for the graduates program, which I think is pretty popular at high school right now. We'll sign on with JMG again. Article Two, this is the one every year, I know our board's tired of me saying this, our scariest area is special education, our costs are rising, percentage of specialized students is rising, we have a little more money for our district placements, we have some students that potentially will go. When a student goes out of district like Sweetser, Spurwing, fifty, sixty thousand dollars just for the education, not including the van ride. So it is significant when we out of district place a kid. So that's a big thing. Our favorite one, Lake Region vote programming, zero. We don't pay for Lake Region vote programming. Extracurricular activities, JRTC, teacher leaders, et cetera. A lot to talk about here on this slide. Student staff support, social work, sorry, I apologize, nursing, guidance, those kinds of things, technology. The reason it's down a little bit, I mentioned this, when people take family plans here, seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars to the districts, and when we have a few people go from family to nothing, it's significant savings to our district. Additionally, we completed our grade three through sixth computer lease, another sixty thousand dollars. One increased area, and Sue's so much better than me and I'm not the best technology person, but we ran some thing and people were trying to get in here from, from Europe or, Sue, am I getting this right? So cybersecurity, we do, geez, this is embarrassing in front of, in front of the kids here, but not, not the best at tech, but we do possess a lot of information, social security numbers, financial information, bank information, so we have upped our firewalls and protections for technology threats that are coming our way to stay ahead. I got that all right, Miss Day?
You did a great job.
Thank you, Miss, all right, passed, all right, very good. Article Six, system admin. Have a lot to say here. School admin, I don't have a lot to say there. Transportation, so transportation, we're bidding out the contract, the board has not approved our new bus contract yet, I anticipate we'll talk about that in the near future, but there will be an increase, we'll hopefully sign on for another five years. An increase in diesel costing that is driving past the pumps, it's not hard to see that prices have significantly increased, you'll see that in this article as well as our next article. Facilities, continue our ten year plan, I think we're all proud of what our facilities look like and how far they've come. I think the board's done a great job supporting that work, I know our townspeople are proud of our facilities. Property insurance, we're also bidding that out for a five-year cycle, which again, I anticipate we'll talk with the board in the near future about that. Electricity, heating oil, and propane all go hand in hand, we've built in increases, we feel like it is going up, it's not hard to see when you drive around. Debt service, this one, I always feel a little slimy when I go over this one. The state bond, we're not really down thirty-eight thousand dollars, the state entirely pays for that bond, it's just a pass through, it's just a written down thing, we don't pay any money for this middle school, we are not really down, we didn't make any cuts, just the interest goes down over the life of the bond, they're going to pay less money, it has really nothing to do with us except we keep track that the state's paying for us. This one is legitimate, that's the high school elevator project, the principal's a hundred and ten thousand a year, so you can see our interest is down to seventy, seventy-three hundred, we're going to have a year or two to go on our elevator project, really proud of that, I think our high school looks great, so that, that is a little bit down. All other, a lot to say here, food service, that group's doing a great job, Sam Wedgwood leading that, that group. And we transfer out every year food service, like most food service programs across the state, we run in the red. Lately with COVID and free, free lunch for everybody and federal reimbursement, we have not run in the red. We build in a transfer every year to support our food service of thirty-five, I think originally, ten years ago, it was forty-five, we're, we're at thirty-five now, that group preparing food, disposable things, they have done an unbelievable job bussing out food during the COVID times, that food service department deserves a big pat on the back. Sam and I know Sue supports Sam, what a great group, really proud of the work they do. So here it is for the numbers people, what I just went over pretty quickly, that summarizes every article that we have, total budget fifteen, four, twenty-six, and the important part, how do we pay for it? State subsidy, so we did receive a decent increase in state subsidy this year, we're always cautiously optimistic that that'll stay, so six point eight from the state. SAC and Main Care, again, that's state agency client students and Main Care billing, so children in foster care, we bill out for services we provide at Main Care, if children have Main Care and we provide services here, we also bill out for that. Ann Coley, Cindy Ward do a great job managing that. This is the funny one, the board's tired of, I think my second year here, we've received a lot of state agency client students, they needed one-on-one educational technicians, the state reimburses us, reimburses us in full for those ed techs, but we hadn't budgeted the money, so we had all kinds of revenue, but we were hitting our ceiling on expenses. So ever since then, we build in the expense in case the kids come, so we get the revenue, hasn't happened since. We've done this nine years in a row, it's never happened again. But we're ready, in case it happens, we're ready. Fund balance contingency is something else, we've never used that, a hundred thousand in Article One, two hundred thousand in Article Two, and fifty thousand in maintenance. We use fund balance, it's the Art Malanson thing, we take fund balance, we put it here in case, we don't use it, go back to fund balance, the next year we say in case, we've never used that contingency money in the whole time, but it's there in case we have major problems. Other revenue, we share our food service director, we also build for a diesel tax refund and we get some interest payment back from our QSCAB high school bond. And local contribution, seven point nine six four is the exact same it was twenty-one, twenty-two, as it will be in twenty-two, twenty-three, zero tax increase total. If we're all one town, if these five towns were called Saukaby Valley instead of Baldwin, Cornish, Hiram, Port Parsonsville, there would be no increase. However, valuations have changed, we do this every year, people are sick of this. You look at Hiram, you can tell there's no home cooking because I am from Hiram, Hiram's valuation's up fourteen million dollars, Cornish valuation is only up six million dollars, you can tell Hiram's going to have to pay a bigger share of the pie proportionally than Cornish. So how our shares get determined, this is the one slide nobody can yell at me or the school board about, the main revenue service sets the town valuation, so if you have a problem with those valuations, please drive up to Augusta and talk to them, has nothing to do with us, but that's why the next slide comes out that we're not all up, not all up zero. And like I said, I live in Hiram and because our valuation increased, even though there's no increase overall, Hiram has to pay a little bit more because their valuation changed. But Cornish and Port come out really well, Parsonsville and Baldwin, none of it's really terrible, but that's why it's not zero across the board because the valuation's on the last slide. So that is Miss Day, all right, that's it, there's our, I tried to go quick, I know you've already heard it, thank you Cindy, I appreciate it. Thank you board, thank you for all your support, the administrative team, really feel like it's a pretty, pretty solid budget, I hope it goes well in our communities. Brad, oh, sorry Judy, I'm still in your role.
Have the act piece and insurance gone up?
Yes.
Have you retained yet?
No. We're going to talk about that later tonight, Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, thanks, Henry. Just going to do this thing. I think students, Miss Day, Ms. Connors, Mr. Stevenson, TV two.
Any last people, tickets? Anybody?